This conference will now be recorded.
You guys ready?
Yeah.
All right, you ready down here?
Wait, hold on.
Now you're ready? Can you believe that? Clerk, can you please start the recording? Today is Wednesday, December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, and I'd like to call today's city council meeting to order. We could all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, united on, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, can we get roll call, please?
Councilmember Fox?
Present.
Councilmember Casper?
Present.
Councilmember Boyle?
Here.
Councilmember Leha?
Present.
Councilmember Servini?
Present.
Mayor Strobin?
Here.
Thank you, Clerk. All right, Clerk, may we please call up public comments from the audience?
Al Filla?
Al Filla, one five two West fifteenth Street. Boy, it's been a busy week. Last Saturday, we had the stuff down here and the stuff up at the high school. There were so much parking there, I passed on that. But had that five p.m. walk. Didn't see some individuals that I thought said they were going to be there, but...
We ran too fast, Al.
Al didn't run at all, but Al finished. The sports team's been doing real good, concerts. Well, there's one going on tonight up at the middle school. Tomorrow night, there's one in a high school. You know, outstanding, need more people to go, need more people to get involved in the community. Thank you, God bless America.
Thank you, Al. Any other comments, Clerk?
Dan Masterson?
There, am I on? Okay. My name is Dan Masterson, and I am currently the La Center representative to the Clark County Arts Commission. So I'm your representative to the Arts Commission. And I'm currently serving the first year of a one, of a four-year term. And coming up on an anniversary, as a matter of fact, I've almost been there for a year now. My mission is to actively support and foster the arts in ways that bring as many members of the community together as possible. My objectives are to engage the community in ways that encourage both their support and participation in the arts, to inclusively engage all communities in art-related experiences, and in doing art outreach to recognize the scarcity of resources and find creative ways to accomplish our mission. We're currently attempting to form a community group to spearhead a number of possible projects, including restoration of artworks like the totem pole which stood in Stern Wheeler Park, which is currently in storage, possible mural projects, art displays at City Hall, and the return of the La Center Art Fair, which is an issue that was very close to Councilmember Servini's heart. She, she ran it for, what, five years?
I was only a partner.
We have one community, we've already had one community, community meeting, and it was pretty well-attended. I think we had about twenty people there. And the second one is scheduled. We also had two, so, so, so far, two community workshops where we get together with artists. They bring their work with them, and we share time together working on our personal projects. And we had about seven people in attendance for the two workshops, which is a start. And we'll try to make it grow from there. I'm here tonight to offer for your consideration of less than a proposal, more than, more of an idea at the moment that could be, become a proposal, to put the currently vacant La Center Police Building to use as a community art gallery, one that would host art events, classes, workshops, demonstrations, visiting artists, sip-and-paint sessions, et cetera. We propose using the lodging tax fund to rent the building from the city and funding expenses using La Center United as our fiscal agent. The lodging tax is to be used to promote tourist, is to be used to promote tourism in our community. The community gallery is a natural and, and funds generated by classes, displays, and events would have the possibility of creating scholarship opportunities and promoting local business. So are there any questions from?
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments, Clerk? All right. Any public comments for those calling in, please press star six to unmute yourselves, state your name and address. Do we have callers on video? Say it again, any public comments from those calling in, please press star six to unmute yourselves to speak. State your name and address. Clerk, are there any public comments to be read?
There are none.
Thank you. Brings up the consent agenda. If there are no requests for any items to be removed, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes, thank you, Council. We do have a presentation tonight. Tonight Superintendent Peter Rosenkrantz will give an update. Peter, the mic is yours.
So just, thank you so much for having me. My wife keeps wondering, why are you presenting at the city council? It's not school. And I said, because I want to collaborate with the city in a way that you know what we're doing, and we know what you're doing, and we work together. And the opportunity for the, the, the weekend where we had the house calls with Santa, and then the Christmas bazaar, and then the tree lighting, all-in-one weekend. It was a holiday weekend we won't soon forget, and capped off with a pretty incredible fireworks show. And even though our star may be a little small on the tree, oh, boy. It looks good for us.
We're a small town.
I was just gonna say, we're small.
Thank you, thank you for pointing that out, Peter.
Sure, anytime.
We're in similar agreeance between some of us.
We can strive for a bigger star next year, it's okay. Boy Scouts can make one for us, it's okay. All right, all seriousness, I do want to encourage folks to attend events. You know, when people say, well, there's not much to do in this town, there's tons of things to do. Everything from elementary concerts, high school concerts, middle school, wrestling events, football, volleyball, basketball, school board meetings, I mean, you name it, city council meetings, there's opportunities to choose your involvement in some way, shape, or form. In December, we spent quite a bit of time reflecting on how the year's gone, where we're headed for the rest of the year, and how we work to achieve our goals. There's one important data point I wanted to talk about. I talked a lot about CTE programs and the growth of those. We have to order our AP exams in the fall for the spring. And we increased our AP offerings from three classes last year to nine classes this year. So, so if you think about it this way, the CTE programs are going to work with students that are going to choose careers that are fed more towards the trades, very much living wage, very high-performing jobs. Or they're going to choose to go towards college and, and earn the certificate. They need to do the jobs they want through college, there's options. And when we lift up one, a lot of times the other one goes down. What we've been able to do is lift both, because we went from three AP courses to nine. My daughter, in her senior year, attended all three AP courses, and there was an average of six to eight kids in those classes. They're fairly small. Last year, we had twenty-three exams ordered for AP testing. This year, we have over two hundred and thirty-six. So that's, that's the growth we're seeing, which is amazing. And it doesn't mean that you, you take an AP course means you're not going to do a trade, or if you're doing a trade, you're not going to go do an AP course or, or college. It's just giving kids options and families options, and that's impressive. I still get chills when I hear that number, because it's pretty amazing. So in a, in reflecting, we use a paradigm of plan, reflect, assess, and then plan, implement, assess, reflect. And it's this continuous development of how we operate within our programs, within our goals. There's five frameworks within, that serve our goal, which is one goal for all students, regardless of circumstances or ability, to have access to instruction in order to develop academically and social, social emotionally. So just one goal focus, and we're able to single, that singular focus really grow programs. And, and there's, so this is all listed out in my board report that we have a board meeting a week from Tuesday, and this goes in, if you want some light reading, if you read our board packets, every, myself, the teaching and learning director, and all the principals do board reports and share with the board what's going on. And they're highly informative about what's happening in our district. And so if you're having trouble sleeping and want some light reading, dive into our website, and you can see those, those options. One last tidbit I want to offer. We're currently having a discussion about volunteerism and how we encourage students to volunteer. We used to have a required, graduation requirement where you had to do X number of volunteer hours in order to graduate. What we find is you have those, that group of students that do it because they know it's the right thing to do, and they want to help, and they serve, and they learn through servant leadership, and that's very powerful. You also have a group of students that doesn't work for, and you're forcing them to volunteer, which actually you create an environment where they hate volunteering and don't want to. So how do we learn from our mistakes of the past? We no longer have that graduation requirement for volunteering. So how do we learn from what we used to do and grow that into something we can do now to encourage students to volunteer in our community? And so what I'm dabbling in is the option of taking a couple school board members, and perhaps a couple city council members, and we collaborate in a committee, task force, so to speak, bring in some students as well, and discuss options for volunteering in La Center. Not so much as a graduation requirement, but maybe they earn accord. Or maybe it, it helps promote a scholarship they can get to go to a trade school or to go to college. So I think there's some options that are, bear some discussion as we look to our youth to teach them how to lead the community, because when we're all gone, they're here. And we need that, we need to feed the system, which means feed our community through our families. And that's, that how we teach leadership is through serving. You all serve, and you're paid so high, highly. School board members, they ask for a raise every time, I double it every time. Double of nothing is nothing, but, but the, the joy you get from serving your community in this capacity are board as well. And if we can do something in the joint venture, that's what I'm, that's what I'm looking at into the new year. So, any questions?
Well, I was gonna ask, like, how we can reciprocate, you know, with your involvement with the city and whatnot. But I mean, you kind of answered that, and I think that's a great opportunity for some great collaboration. And I mean, I think you're spot on with what you're saying as far as, you know, projecting new leadership into our own community, so that's cool.
Thank you.
Yeah, definitely, I heard your idea for this a couple of weeks ago, and I thought it was great. So definitely, definitely look me up when it's time to put that together. I would, I would love to be a part of it and help. The schools here were one of the reasons we moved into town. But I can honestly say that your leadership and your involvement in the schools and the cities are one of the reasons we're staying here. So thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you, and we have a really good team. It's not just one, it's a team. No one can do it alone. It takes many people pulling on their orders to go the right direction, so.
Well, I think that's awesome. I mean, I grew up, you know, umpiring at the little league fields for younger softball teams. And, you know, I did AmeriCorps and did volunteer hours through that, but there's a lot of collaborating there. And what I learned, not just for the hours I got for that thousand-dollar scholarship, but it's memories. I coached the fifth-grade basketball team, and I love having that in, in my life experience, you know, and getting to bring that forward in everything that I've done thus far. So I, I would love to be a part of that in any way. I mean, students are my life, you know that, and just growing up in this community, that's, you know, why I'm here now. Because I, you know, just, it starts out small, and that's important for the students to know, yeah.
Every, every little bit, every, it's like our Lions Club. Every hour of volunteering builds on and grows into really big projects. The number two is important because I can't have a meeting, right? And so we have to, you have to, we can make that work, so you guys can arm wrestle over it. And then we'll...
I just, I think it's another way to strengthen our relationship. You know, as many people don't know, we are working together on the fields as well for not just Holly Park, but also the school, both the high school and the elementary school. We haven't ventured to the middle school yet, but I'm sure that's coming. And to hear the, the collaboration between the two entities for volunteer and, and help teaching the future leaders of our area will only strengthen this community. So thank you, Peter.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Peter? Thanks, Peter. Another great reason to live in La Center. All right, next up is the mayor's report. I wanted to tell you all I actually attended Yakult's city council meeting. It was quite pleasant. The council members and the mayor there are great people. We will try to build a, a better relationship between the town and the city as well with the members. And I would encourage members of the council to attend other city council meetings around the area, so you can see how they operate as well. And you can hear some of the challenges they face. Some of them are far different than ours. I heard about ticks and horses at Yakult's last night, so it was a little, or Tuesday, or Monday night. So it was a little different than what I'd heard elsewhere, so it was very interesting. I do want to remind or let people know that Dennis Hill has taken the lead on helping change the address or the city name for the address for the residents in the city of La Center, out past Timmons Road and such, with the annexation from twenty sixteen, was that, Liz, or twenty seventeen? Is that twenty? I think it's, it's one of those two years. So as of January first, anybody that lives in that area can now put La Center as their address for the city. Still keeping the Ridgefield zip code, but you can put La Center now. And that starts January first, so welcome to La Center, right? I also want to report on the Christmas festival and that weekend. So the Santa Claus, or Santa House calls went off. A few bumps here and there, but it, it really, it did well. We, we visited several houses, ninety, I think we got ninety houses in that, that Friday night. We collected a ton of gifts. As a matter of fact, I haven't even had time to go through all of them with the Lions Club, but they did make it over to the Giving Tree, and they also, a portion of them went to Angels on Wheels. We made, we're gonna make a lot of families happy this Christmas, oh, deservedly so. I do want to thank the Santa Clauses and the drivers. So the Santa Claus, Josh Soski, Peter Rosenkrantz, and Sam Glakler, they had a blast. I told them how addictive it was, and they won't give me back my Santa Claus outfits now. So they learned real quick what a joyful experience it really is. And then thank you to Arnie, Casey, and CCFD Fire and Rescue for the fire trucks as well and the drivers. It was a really, really good turnout. Next year, we'll make it even bigger and better, right? The bazaar?
If I could jump in real quick, the, the bumps were really only noticed by you. Everybody else had a great time. We, it's a little rough, but in all seriousness, it, 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 it was amazing. It, there were really very few, if any, issues that were, that were noticeable. You did a great job with all the work that you did, but you also put a lot of pressure on yourself. And so don't worry about those, those bumps, okay?
And then, thank you, Casey. Then Saturday, we had the bazaar. I think that's probably the most cars I've seen in this city at one time. People were parking all the way down to the post office from the middle school. It was incredible. It was packed, and hopefully every, everyone did well, right? It was nice to see Peter up there taking pictures with people in the Santa Claus outfit as well. And then the Christmas festival. I can't tell you how much joy and happiness it brings to me that this went off as well as it did. At four AM on that Sunday morning, I was really concerned with the amount of rain that was dumping outside my window and how this would turn out, or if we would have to cancel because of high winds and, and inches of rain that were predicted. And were falling at the time. Come eight o'clock, I, I joined the, the city employees helping set up, and the rains were still coming down. Not as hard, but they were still coming down, so there, there was signs of hope. We all watched the weather report very closely, and as you all know, it started to clear up. So it, the, the weather, it couldn't have been, well, I guess I can say it could have been better, of course, right? But for what was expected, it turned out extremely well. I do want to throw some thank yous out to quite a few people tonight, because I believe that they deserve some recognition for the hard work that was put into this. This isn't a one-person event. This was many people to make this festival as big and enjoyable as it was. I can tell you that when I stood on the stage, before we lit the, the tree, that as far as the eye could see, all I seen were people all the way down the road. So we had a turnout that was absolutely amazing, and I could tell by the cheers and yells at the end of the show. But I'd like to thank Rhonda Catchpole, James Cameron, Samuel Glakler, Brian Cast, Jorinda Swingruber, and if I pronounce anybody's name wrong, please forgive me. Pastor Mike, Amy Roberts, Peter Rosenkrantz, I'm not sure this one, Panjalina, Mark Tolan, Chris Soski, Corey Burke, May, Maygra, does that sound right? Maygra? I'm not sure, yeah, sorry. Timmy Russen, Melissa Flat, Chris Swindle, Mr. Clark from the Frontier, and of course, Maria Swinger Inskeep. Without these people, this event wouldn't have happened, I can tell you that. There were many hours, many meetings, ups and downs, frustrations and happiness that took place to make this happen. So I deeply thank each and every one of you. And if I missed anybody, I am so sorry. Just know that you are thanked, and we expect you there next year as well. There are a few other people I'd also like to thank. The city's Public Works, they did an absolute amazing job at setting this up in the weather, the elements, and in the timeframe that was given to them. They worked hard and tireless the entire day. When we all left, when, when we all left at about eight o'clock at night, I think that's the last time I seen downtown when we were doing stuff, you can see the tiredness in their eyes, but they were still smiling. Nobody was crabby, nobody was unhappy. They were giving it their all, and they did. And so they deserve a lot of recognition, because they too, without them, we wouldn't have it. I'd also like to thank, besides that, the city of La Center, the La Center Community Library, the La Center Lions Club, Corey Burke Real Estate, El Rancho Bejo, Last Frontier, New Phoenix Casinos, the La Center Church, La Center School District, Dalmer Trucks, La Center United, the Calitz Indian Tribe, Kelsey Schultz, Rodney Schultz, Husky Drywall, Fortune Casino, Exit Sixteen, Patchwork Acres, Clark Public Utilities, Fast Tech Solutions, Teresa's Little School, Y Racing Events, Pig, Cow, Spud, the Farm. I know that's a lot to, to take in, but there, like I said, there was a lot of people to make that, that night happen. So I want to thank each and every one of you for attending. It was a beautiful night, and I can't wait to see how it turns out again next year. Thank you. That brings up the attorney's report. Mr. Bronson Potter will be presenting. Bronson?
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Everything on the legal front is going along just fine. Been spending a fair amount of time working on the police services agreement, making some progress on that. I hope to bring that to council in the next couple of weeks. There's two words that I'm going to say tonight, and I will never say them again, and that is Riverside Estates. And the reason I bring that up is it's done.
Oh.
The last thing to be done was improvements of open space areas. They had to be landscaped and in-ground sprinklers put in. That was done, it was reviewed and approved by the city, and that was the last thing that our involvement in that project that we had to do. So those words will never pass my lips again, I promise you. Last thing is I just want to wish everybody a happy holiday. As I was coming into town, looking down, as they come down the hill, and the city is so pretty. It's such a jewel, and especially this time of year, it's just, I really enjoy being here.
Thank you. Any questions? For Bronson? Since there's no questions, we'll move on. Thank you, Bronson, appreciate it. Next up, council comments. Councilmember Fox?
Well, after following you, mayor, and all the, you know, thank yous, but just, it was a beautiful Christmas festival. I was just so happy to be there with my family and supporting the Mexican restaurant, as a lot of people did afterwards, which was great. So just beautiful, the fireworks were great, and I just really love living here, lived here my whole life, and I don't plan moving anytime soon, so just happy to be here, happy holidays.
Thank you. Councilmember Casper?
Thank you. Boy, I don't know what else to say after it started with, with Al, and everybody's kind of expressed, I think, what all of our thoughts are about the, the last couple of weeks and the people and everything else. So thank you to everyone that's done every, anything at all over this past month, year, or so to, to make this such a neat place to be. The one thing that I did want to bring up, I don't think anybody has said yet, is at the Christmas festival, I thought it was really cool to see how many La Center High School alumni came back and either sang or had a booth set up where they're trying to set up a, a small business of, of some sort. But there were, there were quite a few people that are clearly staying in the area or keeping a tie to, to the town. And the band director was doing a very good job pointing out the fact that, that people were, were, somebody that had graduated from La Center High School. And then, and then Peter Rosenkrantz also did the same thing with, with some of the vendor booths that were set up, specifically the, the girl that was selling the gingerbread houses. So I think that was, I think that was really neat. Yeah, I think, I think that's it, let's keep it going. The city hall looks great, the town looks great. Be careful, and let's make it a enjoyable season.
Thank you. Councilmember Boyle?
Well, good evening, everyone. Yeah, there, this is a tough one to follow tonight, I guess I don't know what to say. I've been sitting here admiring the decorations here in, in City Hall, and I just thank you, I know. Casey, you stole my thunder, thank you. But, yeah, tree looks great, everything looks good. The, you know, the Christmas festival weekend was incredible. I can't say enough thanks to everybody that was involved. It was great to be a part of and participate and see everybody out there. I know the kids loved it, my kids did. I know the kids loved it. My kids did. I'm sure everybody else's did as well, but yeah, I don't have a whole lot. I know we got one more meeting coming up after this, so I'm going to save my Merry Christmases for then. But good to see everyone. Have a good night.
Thank you. Councilmember Layon?
Well, it seems like forever since we were here for city council last, which is November 15th. So I got a few things done. November 17th, I attended Courageous Voices at the Hilton that was sponsored by the Columbia River Mental Health. And we got to hear Mercedes White Caff was the speaker and she has a bachelor's degree in cultural minority and is a Southwest Washington advocacy coordinator, which is a really good speaker. My friend that's a Battleground City Council person now, she and I go to all these things together and it was just a very, very nice event. December 1st, of course, was the, we already talked about that, all the fire trucks going around the city. That was a wonderful event. I saw lots of photos from that. And of course, I can't say enough positive about the December 3rd event. And I did do the 5K even though it nearly killed me. And the Y Racing is the one that, you know, that organized that. And I got to meet the, I think she's the CEO, Carissa Shoney.
I just want to say that me and Myrna were the only people. Oh, Casey, never mind. Casey did walk.
Casey and we, and Al.
And the only reason why I didn't sign up because it was supposed to pour and I'm an inside cat and I was like, I'm not doing that.
I just hear excuses.
Anyway, it was a lot of fun, even though it almost killed me. Monday, December 4th, I attended my friend Victoria's swearing in at Battleground. And I had already made a decision before you even said anything about that, that I am going to be attending city council meetings. I've gone to Kama's city council meeting twice. I've been to Battleground city council meetings twice. I kind of got to be friends with the mayor of Yakal because I sat next to him at our training that we had on December. What was that, December 9th? It was last, no, December 8th.
Yeah, Saturday.
Yeah. Did he tell you? He met me already? We did a selfie. Anyway. So I am going to go out and do, I'm going to attend one of his city council. Nice young man. December 5th, I went to see the, there's a mock, it's a, oh gosh, I don't know. I have a picture of it. It's a mock, you can't see it from back there. It's a tunnel, a engineer built this mock tunnel that could, to go under the Columbia River. So there's been engineers for the last 10 or 15 years that have been coming up with different ideas of either bridges, two different bridges kind of on either end or a tunnel rather than light rail, since light rail keeps getting voted down. So it was very, very interesting to see this mock done by an engineer, this mock tunnel. Okay, so the, of course, December 8th was the all-morning-long legislative event for the 2024, looking at the legislature. And our senator for Legislative District 20, which is where we're at right here, is John Braun. And I was very happy when they asked him, what's the most important thing he wants to start out focusing on? Is public safety. I'm very happy about that. That evening, December 8th, I attended Night of a Thousand Stars. It's a night to recognize law enforcement and that was put on by the Washington State Patrol. And many state patrol officers and a few county officers and even a couple Vancouver city officers were giving recognition. And they've had more highway deaths in the last couple of years. It's unbelievable. I forget the exact number, but way more highway deaths than they've had in a long time. So December 9th was the all-day event, the Associated Washington Cities. Great event, but I learned a lot, but I did feel like I got hit with a water hose. It was a lot of information. So just lots of really learning, lots of classes. And I'm, you know, just continuing to learn and I'm very happy with Mr. Masterson coming tonight because I'm interested too in getting some art into La Center. I used to belong to the Mosaic Art Alliance and the Battleground Art Alliance. Photography was my art and I would like to see something happen with that. So thank you for presenting tonight and wishing everybody a Merry Christmas. But we'll be back on December 20th and don't miss because that's when I get sworn in. So that's all I have to say.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Servini?
We're going to start giving you three minutes.
I didn't hear that.
Just kidding. I love you.
I would just like to also thank everyone involved for the great weekend festivities. I know it takes a lot of work that no one ever recognizes from staff to all the groups. And we certainly appreciate the turnout and the bonding and the joy as the mayor said, that the community has that entire weekend. So it was great to see. I'd also like to express my thanks for Dawn and your work on Arts Commission. And I do hope you continue and I appreciate the work that you're doing within the community and the area to bring more focus on the area artists. So thank you for that. And after all of that, I don't think there's anything left to say.
I covered it all.
And we appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We do have one staff report tonight, the Public Works and Community Development Staff Report. Mr. Brian Cast will be presenting. Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council. The winter equipment for snow plowing is all ready to go and now it's decorated thanks to the handprints that were done at the Paint the Plow event at the Christmas festival. So looking forward, well, not really looking forward, but we're ready to go if we need them. On the stormwater front, the crew's been pretty busy with all the heavy rains that we've had here over the past month. We really weathered the storm relatively well, a couple plugged culverts, but no major damage or other issues. But definitely had some high water down there at the river. Over on the wastewater treatment plant, we have completed our quarterly lift station cleaning and our semi-annual cleaning of the membrane bioreactors at the plant. And on the engineering side of the work, we have finally, after probably about six months, I think, of back and forth with various staff members over at WashDOT, completed the contract for the horizontal curve and roadway safety project. That's about a $900,000 grant that we received. We, council approved that contract over six months ago and we've been working ever since on WashDOT, making, getting the contract in place with them to help us administer those funds so we can finally get started on that project here. And we're, we're happy about that. Building is continuing at a relatively rapid place, 301 total permits so far this year, 95 new single-family residents included in that figure. On to the community development map, the two subdivisions over on the east side of town are still working through the winter here. Number one, Lockwood Meadows subdivision, they are working on some cement treating so that they can work through the winter and have a, not a mud pit they're working in. Stevens, or excuse me, Ace's View number 37 is also continuing to do some utility work through the winter here. Number four, the Minute Management Site is getting pretty close to completing the Shell Station there. Been working on through some deferred mechanical submittals for some of their equipment for the restaurant in the building there. And Jamie, our new planner, has been working with them on some signs for the project out there. The last thing I will highlight, so actually two more things. Number 66 on the map, the Barnhart property will be back before council in January for their 60% petition and public hearing. And then number 69 on the map, Parmentier Property, they completed a short plat to divide a single lot into two lots. And they're going to be working through their final plat here shortly to finalize that process so they can build a second house there off of Aspen. With that, happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Any questions?
I know there's been some talk about the property on number 55. Is there any progression?
So last we heard, or that what property went through a pre-application conference for, most recently for a single-family low-density residential. Now I believe it's for sale or last I saw it was for sale. So we'll have to see, you know, who, what the buyer is and what they want to do.
Before, wasn't it commercial?
No, it's always been residential. We've had a couple of pre-apps on it in the last few years. There was a medium-density proposal and then most recently that single-family was like two cul-de-sacs. So we'll have to kind of wait and see what happens. I think they did complete demolition of the structures on that site. So it's ready for whoever buys it to do whatever they're going to do.
Any other questions? Okay. Well, thank you, Brian. Great report. All right. Counsel, is there any new business? I know there's no unfinished business, so we'll move on. Before we go to executive session, I do want to remind counselors and the public that we do have a council retreat that I did not put on my mayor's report. The council retreat is this weekend, the Saturday. It'll start at 9 o'clock at the Community Center, the Wheelhouse. La Center, Community Center, and then it will convene here at City Hall. Public is welcome, but this is a council retreat. So questions and conversations between counselors and the public is not permitted. You are welcome to attend to listen though. All right?
Did you say that's starting at?
Starting at 9:00.
No, I know, but you said at the?
At the Community Center, yes.
We're starting there?
Yes.
Oh, I see. And then whenever you're, we're wrapped up there, that will?
We'll be done there by 10:15, 10:20 and then we come back here and keep going. Oh, yeah. Agenda will be, are we emailing an agenda? Okay. So please keep an eye out in your emails for an agenda. Oh, it's already on the website. Oh, there you go. Thank you. We do have an executive session tonight. This is to discuss legal counsel for potential litigation. There will be no action taken after the executive session.
We're extending the executive session an additional five minutes.
Okay.
Okay, and 8:07 we have exited the executive session. Can I get a motion to close the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstain? Motion passes. Thank you, counsel.